Thank you for sharing.
What's up, everybody? This is the poker trading study session. They were gonna be looking at. Multiway scenarios. So let's get started. We're gonna have have like various stacked up and we should be facing multi-way action and everything.
Just brief flop, right?
Oh, yeah.
Alright, so first, you want to introduce the thing before we hop into it a little bit? So we're like facing an open and a flat. Right, so we're essentially looking at our three betting range in multi-weight pots, otherwise known as a squeeze, right?
That the calling range, how to complete.
Right, so yeah, we want to look at calls also. So like generally, one thing I know, and we could kind of test this is, you're gonna have calls. That really kind of centralized around when you have. A cheaper price to call, so big blind and small blind are gonna have a. Higher call frequency and when you're closing or close to closing position, so. Cut-off will have some calls and then the button will have some calls.
We're just playing big blind now, right?
I don't think so. I think we're playing all over. I don't know, though. Maybe he has it set up that way.
No, we're not.
I know in these spots, big blind like stuff that's both suited and connected. Um, the raggedy like high-low. King-nine offsuit stuff falls off really fast, but five-four suited, probably pretty easy to still get in there.
It depends on whether the opening and the call comes from to that, that earlier the positions, the tighter and tighter on range gets from the big line.
In in this sport, I I tend to, maybe not this shallow, but like especially deep, I tend to fold like. Like queen do suited, queen four suited, jack three suited, like the re-raggedy, big cards, small cards, suited combos.
Yeah, I think I've seen in these ranges before that it's taking stuff with like more. Suited and straight potential, like it's somewhere around queen eight suited, maybe it goes down to like queen seven suited, something like that.
Let's play the game. Who wants to go construct the range and then we'll we'll see if we can construct this range before we actually complete here. From the big blind.
I'll have a go, have a go.
Alright, Louis, you got a strong under the gun range and a wide button range.
Yes, and let's start with the.
Just give me the offsuit one, Louis.
Of course, offsuit, um, okay, so offsuit, the the best offsuit queen will be queen jacko. King ten-o.
Okay.
Ace, uh, ace ten-o. Um, I'd I'd free bet laugh ace, ace jacko.
Okay, but don't worry about it. I just wanna have a wild life of what's your calling range.
Just to be pip.
Okay, um.
And then suited stuff, you're playing everything?
Yeah, um, I'm 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 gonna mainly do, so from, um. Um, I'm playing the suited aces, I'm playing suited kings from. From king six plus, queen seven suited plus.
So you you cannot fold really suited hands.
Alright, keep your comments to yourself. Let him finish his range, otherwise.
And then, um, I'm cooling all the straight stuff, so like seven-four suited, seven-five suited, like those kind of hands, like eight. Uh, eight-five suited, like the suited gapper hands, I'm cooling all them.
Alright, so we got a rough floor here.
And then, um.
What about pairs?
Probably cool in. Eights and below.
Okay.
And, um. Yeah, then like, Jack ten-o, I'm cooling.
Don't click the button, Louis.
What he said, because he clearly said queen seven suited, not queen five suited, so it's.
Yeah, and then also, like, okay, so we we have a rough floor here.
And then like, um, eight-seven oh and above.
Eight-eight-seven oh, so you kind of go along the the connector axis there a little bit, is what you're saying.
This is basically, and then like, my bluffs are coming from, so and my value hands are like, nines plus, um. Ace-queen suited plus, and then I got some blocker hands, which I'll be bluffing, like ace-jacko.
Well, yeah, just just start with the floor, because the floor is already a lot to work with here.
This is what, this is around my.
Louis, no cheating.
You're you're miles too tight here, miles too tight. Like on the, uh, on the suited side, yeah, I was gonna say, um, I thought we might fold some of the worst suited combos. Um, you are correct, like the offsuit branch. Definitely loses a lot of value multi-way. Um, they just don't perform well in multi-way pots, so I. I think your offsuit branch is not too far off. It looks like you're a little tight, but.
Can 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 we go deeper and see how it changes? Because I'm pretty sure we have to be a lot tighter when we're deep.
I can tell you, I, alright, so before Louis clicks the button, it's gonna tighten like a pip on the offsuit side. And we're gonna start losing some of the worst suited combos and maybe. Yeah, yeah, around there, Joey, you're correct. And then like along the offsuit pair axis. It's gonna go up to like, you're gonna lose some of these offsuit gappers, I think. So now he goes up to. Like, just do sixty or like, yeah, do deep stack, so eighty. So the gappers are still in there, some. The nines are still pretty resilient on the offsuit axis, so I was a little tight there, but yeah, the. The offsuit does tighten up a little bit.
This is the max. You're still playing all the all the suits and stuff.
You should be, right?
Can we see, um, the EV of some of these hands? It's a little cut off for me. I'm like, okay, great. Thing I was just thinking, like, if you just like drop the suited twos and threes, you're just like, you're not losing a lot. Like the lower.
I don't know, I don't know.
Alright, so I would explain it this way, Tim, like I I had a, I had some database work done recently and I'm going through it right now. And. This, first things first, like making those justifications when you're looking at an equilibrium strategy, this is like versus a perfect opponent with perfect information, so like. That's not what you're playing, so they're gonna make mistakes, they're gonna be underrepresented in these. These regions, like the threes and the nines and some of this stuff. So like the the true EV of these spots is actually higher. And when you start looking at like the EV of these combos per big blind per one hundred, so jack-three suited, for instance, it's only worth point zero three. Well, if you convert that to big blinds per one hundred, that's three big blinds per one hundred, that you're just kind of like pissing to the wind. And then like that compounds as you kind of go through the entire branch of suited three, so you got two, four, seven. And then, I mean, it just, it quickly becomes a significant number. At least that's how it was presented to me.
Alright, so basically, call here?
Yeah, like this call is worth like a mountain of big blinds.
Oh, yeah, this one I didn't think was close, like I'm.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Like have my doubts about Jack two suited, but like, something that's suited and connected, slam dunk.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, this one was a call, then.
So cut-off and button. Um, I could, alright, so what do you think the worst suited ace that squeezes here is?
Ace deuce.
For value or on the polarized block side?
Well, I mean, if it's the worst one, let's go polar. So like Louis said ace deuce, I think that's not bad. I think suited wheels will probably have some mixed frequencies here.
You're not, you're not picking the suited ones out of all, you're going offsuit here and you're going by king-jack off or.
I think we might, I think we might do some jam with ace-four, ace-five.
I'm gonna say it's. But but you're thirty effective, alright, so there's two factors, you're thirty effective. And it's a wide range versus a really wide call, so like. We will jam pretty aggressively here, I think. Um, which is gonna, and like, you're right, like from the big blind, there's the push and pull, like you want to use the offsuit trash a lot. But you are going to use some of the suited stuff here, I think. Yeah, okay, so the five, the four, the three, the suited wheels. And you are using like the offsuit, the big difference I think here is with the offsuit trash, you're kind of wanting to like. They're the ones that you don't mind raise folding, right? Like that you're kind of stabbing around with.
You were both right, like the offsuit ones for that polar range, like, because you don't want to ship it in with aces, so you have to have some bluffs. So you want, so you want the blocker ones, and then we're shoving like the suited aces and the and the sort of middle pair, middle of range. Linear side, which is like, you just want to run it.
Yeah, I mean, versus two, versus two ranges, the likelihood of getting called goes up a little bit, so you want your suited ones for when you got to go to the flop.
Yeah, that's that's correct, Ken, so you you need a little more backup when you're gonna get called and you're putting thirty big blinds in the middle, right? Like, you don't want to show up with an ace-five offsuit after getting called. But yeah, you're you're right.
Oh, but the wheels are are going.
Alright, so offsuit sevens, you can let go from this stacked up, I think. Um, yeah.
What do you play here, queen nine?
Queen nine, I think is very close, because you need to defend a little bit wider when you're sub-twenty, right?
Queen eight.
Queen nine, yeah. Queen eight, you're probably not making a huge mistake with queen eight. I just don't think you want a queen, because you're kind of blocking. The bottom of the EP opening range.
Yeah, I just knew you have to cool a bit wider when you're shallow.
And you're correct, you do. You've expanded to like two gappers and your, some of your eights.
Well, part of it, part of it is your queen eight is too low, your eight is too low too. Because there you're trying to get a top pair of queens and you want to make sure you want, you want to have a good probability that that queen is good when you're. When you flop, but I think that's.
That plays into the calculus.
You can make it straight with queen eight, I mean, uh. Yeah, queen nine, I guess it does play into queen nine.
Okay, so this is kind of interesting, um, small blind, how do you think the small blind defending range differs from the big blind defending range?
Oh, there's a world of difference.
Tighter, tighter, tighter.
It will be tighter.
Cool in and more free betting when we do VPip.
Okay, I think this would be an interesting one to kind of construct, because I feel like I'll make some mistakes here.
Yeah, I think it's kind of like straight lines. When I visualize the small blind, it's gonna have like some suited aces, it's got some suited kings. And then, uh, then it's gonna go down like this, the connected, the connector lines and the straight lines.
Alright, let's try to, let's try to, okay, never mind, let's try to construct it. I'll get, I'll give it a go, because I think I'll screw this up. I'm going to call like as wide as king-five, maybe, king-five suited, somewhere in this region. Um, you're gonna VPip all of your suited aces here to some extent, maybe ace-deuce off is gonna. Fold, but I'm not, I'm sorry, suited, stay on the, stay on the suited side, I said off, I meant suited, so ace-deuce all suited is questionable. Um, so yeah, ace-three suited is for sure VPipping some form or fashion. Um, I think queen six or seven. Yeah, we'll get to those, uh, I'm just talking about pure VPips, I don't know what way they're gonna do it. Um, I think jack-eight probably, maybe jack-seven, it's somewhere in there. Um, ten-seven, ten-eight's gonna be the line, somewhere in there. Um, nine-seven, I think is gonna be the ni, the line, eight-six. Um, seven, and then it's gonna go, I don't think seven-five, I think eight-six off maybe. And then six-five maybe. Um, pairs, I think we're gonna draw the line somewhere around fours, I don't know if we're gonna go down to threes.
Pocket deuce, never lose.
Want to go all the way, you want to go all the way to deuces? Maybe, I don't know, I I think in game I would be around fours, but I could see deuces in there, not being crazy. Um. I think king-jack off is going to be close. I think ace-ten off is gonna be close, I think those are gonna, I think queen-jack off is gonna mostly fold. Um, and yeah, that's, this is somewhere where this is. Somewhere close, yeah, something like this is close to where I'm at, maybe some, uh. Nah, I don't even think the offsuit, I don't even think the offsuit ones, I think that's close.
Yeah, are these all calls or three bets?
These are VPips, so we're just putting, this is, this is. Hands that I'm going to put money in with, as far as like, if we're talking jams, like. It's gonna be kind of polar here, like, we're gonna be jamming a lot of the suited broadways and maybe some of the suited wheels some of the time.
I say, I was gonna try to say you're a little too wide, but it's not.
Ever jamming pocket sixes?
So we're forty effective, yeah, I mean, I am a little wide here.
Ooh, very wide. So. Well, I do students.
Yeah, I was a bit surprised with these suited kings, I thought these suited kings were very ambitious out of position.
I think I'm over folding a seven, I was not playing a six or seven.
This is what I'm trying to do these days. Now, if I'm got a lot, a big table count or.
I was like, is he really out there doing that?
Yeah, I was thinking like, if we're only forty bit, I think if you're deeper, it's, it's alright, like, say you're like early stages a hundred, I can get down with these suited kings, but.
It's not against starting the gun, like if it was middle position, maybe like highjack or lowjack, king-five might start squeaking in there, but I think it was under the gun to open here.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's not too, alright, definitely the suited queens and kings, I'm a, I'm a bit wide with here. Over ambitious, everything else seems like in the ballpark, king-jack off, okay, a little ambitious.
Let me clear it out.
Nine-seven-eight-six.
All out of line.
Nine-seven-eight-six, the two gappers don't get involved much either, that versus only position, uh, wrong position.
Is deuces in there?
Deuce.
Four, fours, oh, deuces, deuces are in there, so I was too tight with the pairs. And too wide with the suited gapper type blocker hands.
Pocket deuce, never lose. Come on.
There's a problem with these suited ones, when you make top pair, you're gonna be dominated a lot, so you want the straight redraws, the king-nine, queen-nine, jack-nine. I'm surprised like jack-eight's not in there, to be honest, but.
Ace ten off or squeezing or folding?
I would, I I'm not, honestly, I'm not squeezing a lot of the offsuit stuff here.
I'm a little bit out of line here, maybe with some queen-jack off sometimes, I could be, I could.
Hey, do me a favor real quick, Louis, will you, uh, change the average stack to a little bit deeper and see how it affects some of those regions? I may just be misapplying some of these concepts, just go to the deepest.
Honestly, don't think it's gonna change very much.
Well, go to a hundred, let's just see for, for sakes.
You're gonna be tighter at a hundred, I think.
It's all the same cards, no?
But it doesn't change, does it? Not really.
There was, there was mixed frequencies of some of the suited kings coming in there, but yeah, I mean.
Pip tighter on the suited nines.
Mm-hmm.
A pick tighter on on here.
Yeah, it actually just tightened up. The, what did change was the suited connectors, they became a a more aggressive strategy. Didn't they? They're just, well, yeah, they're squeezing more now.
Yeah.
Squeezing more and they're playing more.
They're playing more squeezing.
Yeah, well, that always happens in the deep stacks, you want, you want your free bets which can make nuts, right? Which is the suited connectors.
Yeah, and you're playing a portion of the range where they don't have, they they lack.
Yeah, they're not as well represented there, okay.
Alright, would you say something about why we loosen up as stack depths get smaller? Just, just the, just what's the logic behind that?
Because there's more big lines in the middle, it's a bigger ratio to our stats.
It's a, yeah, yeah, Louis is right. It's a risk reward thing, so like, think about it, if you have three big blinds. And you're in the big blind and the button opens, like, what are you, what are you folding? Nothing, right? Like, you have three big blinds and a thirty year stacks in there, it's just, it's kind of a risk reward thing and a, like, um. A, the larger portion of your stacks in the middle, it it just kind of is around pot odds, I think.
Yeah, just more willing to stack off lighter than sure you are.
Yeah, you can realize your. Equity realization that you're gonna have a pretty good sense of whether you should be getting your stack in the middle when you're out of position, whereas like you put yourself, you know, fifty, eighty, hundred bigs. From the smaller big blind, and you're gonna have a lot of dicey spots out of position, you're gonna end up under realizing equity against a competent opponent.
In positions, power diminishes as stacked up to get shorter.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good, I haven't thought about it, I haven't worded it that way before, but that makes sense.
Okay, who's going for this one?
Fuck no.
Somebody have, uh, somebody have a good time.
Oh, we're just going for ranges?
Yeah.
Yeah, squeeze range, where, so what are you, what are you looking at here at fifty? Versus two, a wide range and a capped range.
Uh, like VPips or everything?
Just keep it easy.
Uh, ace-five, ace-four suited. Uh, king-ten, king-jack, queen, the suited tens. All, yeah, all the top of the range, obviously. Um, ace-ten off, plus. Um, king-jack off. All pocket pairs. Jack-ten suited. King-nine suited. Queen-nine suited, jack-nine suited, king-eight suited. Um, yeah, suited connectors down to six, seven?
I kind of like that.
Maybe king-ten off some, um, he's like a decent three-bet candidate right now and then. Um, yeah, something like, I I don't.
I think you're too loose on the offsuit side and not wide enough.
I might be, how how deep are we?
Fifty, fifty.
Yeah, I'm probably flattening all my suited aces then.
Yeah, suited aces, I think you gotta get it there. I think kick ten off, kick jack off, queen jack off's way too loose, I think.
I didn't put queen jack off in Louis's. I don't think I put.
King jack off, honestly.
Take out the six-five suited, he said down to seven-six suited.
I don't think I put king-ten off in there, did I? Maybe?
I don't think this is bad, Nick, I think this may be a smidge tied on the suited branch, but, um.
I think you can just lose ace-two suited.
I think you can fly in position, and I think you can three-bet like ten-eight suited, jack-eight suited some. Um, I think those are like the slivers of the range that are gonna mix.
I don't think jack-eight suited in there, maybe.
Those may be there as flats, so this cutoff range is definitely gonna be pretty, pretty capped.
I think I'd have suited eights in there.
Okay, so it's the nines mainly. Um, jack-eight was a smidge wide, king-eight is in there, yeah, Nick, honestly, Nick pretty much nailed this. Pretty good, actually. Like, okay, you missed slivers of six-five, but like, I think you could have gone either way on that by the sounds of it.
Well, I mean, it's like very thin to me, no?
Well, me, I was going thin, like, I even said like, king, king-a-jacket probably slivers, ten-eight probably like three better fold. I mean, I was wrong on what it's doing, but it's like the cusp of the range.
You're doing great, this this range is very reasonable.
Yeah, if you can replicate this in game, uh, and hit like, hit a quarter of these three-bet frequencies, you're probably doing pretty good.
Yeah.
But that range is like exactly the same as the range in the, from the small blind, in the last one.
Alright, who's next? Let's get a, let's get, let's get a seasoned professional here. Somebody, somebody step up. Ken, your turn.
Oh, my goodness.
Why do I gotta do a deep?
He's gonna fold, old man's gonna fold.
I'll go for this one, just because it's deep stacked.
Okay.
Alright, um, let's see, so it's, let me see who, who are the, who it's, lowjack, just for lowjack. And we are in.
I think play three better folds.
Okay, you want to do, okay, Ken.
You can do it, Ken.
I don't think we have too many flats here.
Go for it, Ken. Okay, so we know some of your strategy, now let's fill in the rest of the grid.
So just, I'm just three better fold now, so like ace-queen.
Well, I can tell you, okay, so we're in the cutoff and it's eighty effective, um, you will have some flats here.
Yep.
Uh, ace, the suited jacks, ace-jack, king-jack, queen-jack, king-queen, just three betting all these, by the way.
At eighty, it's probably fine.
Ace-five suited.
Okay.
And like, nines plus. That's all I'm doing.
Alright, so.
I'm raising, I'm three betting that range, that's it.
Okay, so what do you think the calling range is? What do you think the GTO balance range is? Not what you're doing.
No, I don't think, I don't, I don't think they have much of a call range, I think.
So much of a calling range means like two combos, maybe three combos or just?
We'll be calling like half of our range.
You're gonna call some, because you're, you're almost closing position, you do have the button to worry about, so. It is gonna call a little bit less.
I think ace-jack suit will be like a pure flat, pocket-eights, pocket-sevens are gonna be like pure flats.
I'm with Nick on these.
I think ace-queen suited is a high-frequency flat, you can three-bet.
Pocket force.
I think it's too far down. Eighty, it might be okay.
I think you're gonna wind up with calling all the pocket pairs, um, I think it's gonna. Mix the frequency squeezing with probably all the suited broadways.
More wheels or no?
I think ace-four, ace-three will be, will be in there for mixed frequencies.
Yeah, I think I'd play a couple of those.
I don't think ace-ten off is in there, I think it's too wide.
Versus under the gun and lowjack, probably, it's probably like slivers of three-bet, but.
I take king-jack out.
I think ace-jack off is gonna be like folder three-bet.
I feel like ace-jack will have mixtures of fold-call and three-bet, I feel like it will go complete Neapolitan here.
No one plays ace-ten here.
I don't think we're gonna do a lot of calling with our offsuit branch, I think we're mostly.
I think it's good to like move ace-ten here against these positions.
I don't know, I would, I would stop a little bit with these two.
Ace-ten might have some three betting, like sometimes, every time.
King-jack is gonna be a complete fold here, I think, but I think ace-ten will have like maybe twenty percent three bets.
Those are gonna have, have a bit of.
So this should have some shenanigans here, right?
Yeah, down to six-five, I think you're gonna have mixed frequencies of stuff, VPips. I think you gotta, you gotta, nah, offsuit jacks and suited nines, I think you gotta be careful with, just because we're in the cutoff, not the.
So I guess we're kind of close.
This, this is, jack-nine's probably okay, Danny, I think it's close. So sixes is where it's kind of like fading out. Oh, look at Ken, Ken was right.
Yep. I looked, I looked up on my computer, I I looked it up in front of the deals, um, lowjack's range is just really strong, if you, if you look back in the tree to lowjack. I mean, under the guns actually not the biggest problem here. Always has like king-jack suited and like ace-ten suited, those are just good.
Just having a flapping range just felt really bad, it's like not something I generally.
Hey, yeah, slow, slow down for two seconds, okay, so, look at, look at a hundred real quick. Like, because you definitely have calls here, I've looked at these ranges a million times and. I have like a very select few of the poker pre-flop academy ranges still. And there's definitely calling, there's definitely calling ranges.
Yeah, I'm sure there probably is, it's just not something I do.
Yeah, we're, we're playing GTO, though, that's what we're trying to figure out, we're, that's why we're asking like what the the solution is.
Oh, Galen, you are right, it looks like they forgot to put it in for eighty.
Yeah, I, I, I think the eighty ranges were ran differently, so like, if you go to a hundred real quick.
Oh, you're totally right.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, so they have to be similar to this.
Yeah.
Yeah, it it should be.
Doesn't have it?
You know what that looks like right there, that range? So I think, yeah, that, that, um, that eighty range looks like a range if there's two flatters, so if there's like a a raise-call-call. This looks pretty close to what this would be.
The raise-call, fold-call, yeah, that's when I got one call.
Go back to a hundred so we can compare.
No, with two flats, there's not gonna be any.
I guess we should rely on a hundred here.
Yeah, it should be fairly similar.
You're right, Ken, um, yeah, you're right, with two calls, you don't really have a calling range.
No, I thought ace-jack off was like, like three better fold, it's just pure folds.
So like, this is. Fair enough.
This is reasonable right here, like, look at this, this is pretty reasonable. Alright, we were a little ambitious on the offsuit branch here. Um. But the suited side, I would call this pretty dialed in.
Yeah, looks good.
I'm a bit confused why it's so different, the sixty, the eighty and the hundred.
They change how they ran it, it's based on what they allowed, in one, they didn't allow you to flat call, they simply like clicked a button that said no flat call.
Oh, it's like a glitch.
They ran it around, yeah, yeah.
Oh, it's a glitch, okay.
Yeah, that's something that probably should be reported to, on the GTO wizard.
But it's like nice to see if you were to be playing a three better fold strategy than like the. But it's like nice to see if you were to be playing a three better fold strategy than like the other ranges, the one you'd be playing.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Ken, Ken and I have found stuff like this looking through ranges before, like, um, you know, you gotta think these guys are running hundreds, if not thousands of pre-flop ranges, like some, some goofy ones get in there.
And when you start to have like high ACM spots, you do a lot of like small raising, it starts to look more like that three better fold.
That's right, Tim. Yeah, that, that's for sure, right? Okay, we got a.
I think we're supposed to call this one. It's a punch again population.
I think it's a, it's a, it's a fold. It's like, that's two hundred big blinds per one hundred. You just torched. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm off a magnitude.
Yeah, it's the worst. Well, I guess it makes sense if it's the worst ace queen off that we raised, that's the one we fold then, I guess, right? Like, that's our bluff.
No, it's suited though.
Wow, you're, uh. You, you got there though, so.
We got there.
God, I'm good at that. Suck the equity.
Ah, interesting. What do you call him?
Call, God, well, this is, I mean, this is strong. We're calling.
Jam, jam call. Ooh, I think ace queen is a. Ace queen is an interesting question.
This is just easy. This is just linear plus.
Oh, it definitely is. I mean, like, yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking tens. I, I believe you told me jacks.
I was gonna say, I think nines is very close here.
Nine and eight, like you're looking at this with two eight, you're like, eh?
No, no, nines is a pure fold.
We're in chip B, right?
Jack's ace king.
So eight is way out of line here.
I think eights is a fold. I think nine, I think, so I think tens is a clear call. I think eights is a clear fold.
All right, let's do like this. What is LoJack's jamming range, right?
Yeah, I think tens are gonna be bad here because of that.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think tens is fold as well. So his jamming range is pretty absurdly tight, and then the cutoff's calling range is even tighter than that.
I don't think ten is gonna be.
Is it? Is it?
The weird thing is it's, it's tight, but it's also, it's not actually super nutted, like, like, you know, some people in the population show up here with queens, but like LoJack.
Okay, so. Like, to constrict the LoJack range.
Off. All right, so hang on, hang on. Ace Jack off here. What do you say?
Fold.
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 Ace queen off.
Fold.
Fold. Call.
I'm not folding ace queen for sure.
Calling ace, I think ace queen's a call. I think ace jack suited is an interesting question.
I'm a pip titer.
It's a fold.
I'm ace queen suited plus and ace king off plus and jack.
I'm with Nick.
It's.
With nice M. Ace queen off might be okay.
I'm following ace jack suited and ace queen off.
Ace queen off is a fold.
That cutoff range is strong.
Yeah, definitely. It's not LoJack I'm worried about. It's cutoff, for sure. LoJack can have all.
Right, exactly. Full ace queen off. Okay, so ace queen, you guys don't want it, right?
I'm not playing. I worry jack suited, honestly.
I think that's a little tight. Let's see. Yeah, tens, right. Tens plus ace king. Dial then?
So, is this our calling range? Is that sevens down there?
Yeah. I was like, I was like, I was like, I was like, I'm a warrior.
Hey, well, we, we were talking, we were talking a lot there for a second, so I was gonna explain, like, uh, I was gonna say something about the pairs. I think like a lot of the LoJack jamming range is gonna be consist of like really trash pairs that have a lot of equity. Um. I, I don't know. I think, okay, so some.
Uh, he just like always has Jack ten suited.
Yeah, Jack ten suited, seven. See, like, I think in reality, this is gonna have more five, sixes and sevens. Which is gonna like drive the equity of our pairs up a little bit. That's why I was like on the fence with nines.
I also think it's gonna be like ace king off in reality.
Yeah, in reality, if it's me, it's ace queen off every single time I'm jamming.
And another way I think about it is like my pairs, I'm against two all-in ranges, so I got two ranges that have, both have high cards against my sevens.
What is the LoJack's range?
And nines, like. Gonna do really well against my milling pairs.
Oh, we were looking at.
Yeah.
No, the cut, the cutoff call, sorry, I'm, I'm at the cutoff range. Yeah, so this is the range I was worried about. I didn't think it'd be all the, I, I thought it'd be stronger than this still, like ace ten suited, ace jack off. But yeah, pretty.
But that's like smashing sevens and eights basically, right? Nines.
Yeah, like if you know the worst pair he has here is sixes, I mean, it's pretty brave to call with sevens.
So let me ask, if somebody jams, if someone has ace jack suited and then someone ha, calls with ace king suited. Do you think the call with sevens goes up or down in value?
That's a great.
Yeah, goes up.
Okay, okay, so, yeah, like, I mean, if you're against two ranges and they have, they're blocking each other's outs, like, the, the value of these pairs goes up. It's like, I, I understand, like, it's kinda scary being against like more than two cards. But like, I mean, that's just kind of the nature of a multi-way pot, I think.
But why don't we call down to twos? Why don't we call down to pocket twos then?
Well, there's diminishing returns if you're, if you're worse than the worst pairs that they're jamming. Like, if they're only, if there's only like sixes through, let's say there's eights through fives in that range. Calling with twos is just torching at that point, that's why.
Yeah, and every pip you move down, you get counterfitted a little bit more often and that matters.
That, yep, yep, Tim's right. The, the board's gonna run out five, five, six, six more frequently.
And you're gonna hit a set sometimes too.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Um, this is gonna, I think this can jam sometimes. I think you definitely V pip this. You don't get to fold. It's gonna be calls and jams, I think.
I think I agree with V pipping. I think I saw that the range, the low aces were just doing a lot of, a lot of, uh.
I think this is a fold.
Oh, I am offended. I am offended, you nits.
I think this is a fold gets two players. It does stack that.
Only ones I want to.
There's no way you can call this. You're gonna get squeezed every time.
Six suited, I will let go.
We, we have no calling range here. We're too short. It's jam.
We, yeah, but I, I think this hand's gonna mix jams and folds.
We might have like one percent calls with. No, I don't know. I can't think of a hand.
Uh, you know what? I was ignoring the fact that we're twenty effective. I kind of, I'm agreeing more with you guys. I don't think we call really.
So what do we do?
We're gonna go ace two, ace six.
Ace ten off.
Let those ones go. Ace jack off.
Ace ten and ace jack are probably mixing frequencies. I mean, so this cutoff range is like trash. It should be trash a lot.
I mean.
Or aces.
Just re.
Or aces.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's trash or aces.
But ace ten.
Ace ten, I'm on the fence about. I would probably say fold versus two ranges, but I don't know.
Makes sense.
Let it go.
Okay, I think ace five through ace three are gonna have mixed frequencies. I think six, six and seven probably mixed folds. And then you're probably just, you're probably V pipping ace eight.
I'm like, yeah.
I wanna have an ace against like, ease, no? I would start the eight and nine probably bad.
Uh, I think it's fine.
Maybe a nine is good enough.
Nice, it's five suited, it's a solar approved shot.
Yeah, well, I think, I think this is okay. I think that's fine. Um, the pairs are kind of interesting. Like, what do you go down to with the worst pair? I'm. I think you probably go extremely wide with the pairs. I would not be surprised to see all pairs in here.
Oh, wow, that's.
Five? Not all pairs. I don't think.
All right.
If Louis wants to fold pocket twos, it's, it's a.
Listen to the news.
All right, so let, let me ask this question.
Pip all pairs. I think we maybe we flat and fold.
Eight plus is a shot. Eight pocket, it's up to, thinks is a shot.
So what about the cutoff? Do you think the cutoff has any pairs here other than like the very nut of nut combos?
I think he's gonna have slivers of pairs.
Slivers, maybe. I think most of his pairs are jamming, most.
Uh, I was at sevens, not eights, but that's me.
You're jamming sevens?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
You reckon this is a pure jam strategy, right?
No.
It's gonna be very heavy. It's gonna be very heavy.
I have some thoughts.
I probably pure jam here.
Well, you get like some three bet small as well, like aces will three bet small and like some random like ace five suited or fives or something will three bet small sliver.
I, I think no three bets small. I think no three bets small at twenty bigs when there's a bet in a call.
And a jam aces?
Yes, Quinton suited is a jam.
What do you do with the king queen off? You just call?
Pie jam, pie jam.
You jam, jamming?
It's gonna be, I think it's gonna mix, man. I think it's gonna mix like raise.
All right, so we don't know.
Yeah, it's V pipping. I, I don't know exactly.
This seems reasonable to me.
I think king nine, maybe like some of the suited nines are getting in there, but besides that, like, I think this is in the neighborhood.
The worst short stacks, so we are naturally into super connectors, not really into suited. Do we call a bit more with kings, suited kings?
I.
You're folding ten nine suited here on the button.
Yeah.
Kelly, what do you do with?
I think king nine, ace eight are the ones to add here.
Ace eight suited here, Kelly.
Yeah, ace eight suited, king nine suited.
I don't like ace eight suited. I don't like ace seven suited. I don't like ace six in here.
What about these dudes?
I don't like ace deuce, no, no ace deuce.
No suited nines here, Kelly.
I like all the suited nines.
You like them.
They're normally calls.
Okay.
Also, that's one.
At twenty?
Maybe not at twenty, maybe not at twenty though.
Do we wanna play a king jack off sometimes?
Too wide.
No, I hate those, hate those hands.
I don't hate it. I don't hate it at twenty bigs, cuz if we get.
I don't know, man. I really.
I overfold those hands, but I, I don't, I don't like them. I like raising with them. I like raising with them, but I don't like calling.
They're doing better with twenty big lines. Ooh.
I think we'll have slivers of calls.
So there is a call range.
No nines, no nines.
The low, the low pocket pairs are gonna call.
I've been studying this spot a lot lately and my nines are where I'm kind of big weak, leak there.
Uh, Jack ten and queen ten, Jack ten and queen ten are kind of interesting. And just to note, there is quite a calling.
Jack ten's all suited, awfully hard to fold for me.
There is quite a calling range here. And like ace ten also is in there. Queen, king off is something.
Yeah, that's another one that's hard to fold.
I was too aggressive.
Yeah.
I mean, the cooling range is two percent. Like, this is gonna be really hard to implement. I, I, I just have no cool in here.
And a jamming range is eight percent, so like.
Yeah, thank you, Nick. Thank you, Nick.
A fifth of the range is calls.
Yeah, you, you can't just diminish it because like you, you thinking that way. It's a hundred and eleven combos is jamming, which is the primary frequency compared to thirty. Which is calling. Like, it's not insignificant.
I mean, like in game, I'm just gonna be like, I got queen, jack, king, queen, fives and fours, I'm calling. I, I don't know, it's just like. The EV is gonna be similar jam and it's just eas, easier to simplify, I think.
You're just gonna fold most of the time with those kind of hands. And I, I don't think, the problem with calling here is that you're gonna get jammed by the big blind and the small blind a lot of times in game.
Then you call it off. I don't think because it's. Calling here is you get to call it off when that happens, if it goes fold, fold behind you.
I don't think because it's easier is a good reason to do something in poker. Like, you could always just play a jam or fold strategy. It'd be pretty easy.
I think. Look at the difference in EV between calling king, queen suited and jamming king, queen suited here, really.
Gonna be similar, surely.
Mixing, so it's gonna be the same.
Right, like that's the hand that really wants to flat. And so like the EV difference is very minimal here.
What about our like pocket fours, threes, twos?
Well, those ones are folds.
All right, so let me ask a question, Peter. Do you think for a opponent who's making a mistake, do you think it's higher EV to jam or to call?
Hang on, hang on. I just wanna say something real quickly.
Happy birthday to Peter.
Happy birthday to Peter.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thanks, guys.
Happy birthday.
You're spending it with us? What a nerd.
No days off.
Players who are making mistakes, they're gonna be too wide here. They're going to torch themselves.
Right, so do you think? So you wanna, you think jamming would be higher EV than taking it post flop there?
Yes. They're almost certainly gonna be too wide here. And our, our range is very linear by nature. We don't, we're not separated with a bluff part here. It's, it's a jam strategy.
Yeah, I agree with Peter.
Like, if they're too wide, we want them to put in all the chips.
All right, so I'm just gonna ask for the offsuit version here.
Mm-hmm. That'll be.
Wish me luck, guys.
Have a good one, Tim. Good luck, my man. All right, somebody, Danny, I hear you. I hear you. I hear you in and out, Danny.
Who? Uh, give me one sec. Can I do the next one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are you ready?
All right, what about you, Peter, or me?
Could I give you a heuristic that I do here for defending the big blind?
Yes.
Okay, so I start by defending my offsuit, uh, fives, so like queen five versus the button. I'll do queen six versus the cuddle. Queen seven versus the hijack, queen eight versus LoJack, under the gun and under the gun one. So I'm going to start with queen eight, adding an extra opponent. I'm going to defend queen nine. So I'm gonna start defending my offsuit queen nine here, and then we're gonna build my strategy around that.
Very nice.
I'm gonna do king eight, seven.
On the offsuit side. I like how you talk through that. It's, it's pretty good.
Something like this?
Yeah, ace seven, maybe ace five. And the, uh.
How low?
Maybe seven, maybe seven, six.
And then ace, do you see a ball? It's four.
Ace five and ace four might be mixed frequency. And there's gonna be some three bets in there cuz we're sixty deep.
Mm-hmm.
And then all the better offsuit stuff I'm gonna call.
What about the gappers? Are you doing any of the offsuit gappers?
Um, no. No, I won't defend very many of those.
All right.
All right. Honestly, it's pretty reasonable, Peter. You are tight on the gappers is what I was thinking, but, um, for, for the most part, this looks pretty good.
Yeah, the construction is pretty spot on. Offsuit nines, we started, we're building, we're there from there and then, yeah. Well, makes sense.
A little surprised that you're not three betting some of these trashy asex, cuz I figured they might work their way in there, but I guess sixty's too deep.
Yeah.
It's, it's preferring some of the middling suited gappers.
Maybe starting from fifty.
Mm-hmm. All right, cool. Maxie, I think this next one's got your name written all over it.
Oh, yeah, that's why we have two opens. Oh, gosh, so deep.
Hundred big blinds. What, what's the floor?
Bigs. Are we doing the suited or offset or everything?
Offsuit, cuz suited, you're gonna play everything.
Yeah. Offsuit.
BP call off.
Yeah, I never started this multi-rate deep. I think tens is the bottom. And, uh. Offset tens also.
Offsuit tens, okay.
Yeah, well, of course, we're raising the premium ones, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
What do you do with ace nine here?
I fold this.
Ace eight?
I fold though, up to ace ten, I fold this.
You, what do you do? You're on the big blind, Maxie. Think about it.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Ace five off.
No, it's still, we're still sort of deep and we have two persons in the.
All right, I'm gonna pose a question for you, Maxie. All right, so when you're above forty big blinds, what kind of hands win pots usually, like at a hundred? Hands win pots usually, like at a hundred? It's not top pairs, I'll give you that hint, so it's. Like five card hands, right? It's like straights and flushes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When you have a discount to get into the pot here. What kind of hands on the offsuit side do you think will benefit from that logic?
Gappers.
Gappers probably good, connectors probably good, so like one big part that you're just completely admitting at this point, you haven't even talked about is. The suited along the pair axis, so nine, ten, nine, eight, seven, eight. All of those can make pretty cheeky straights, right?
Yeah, but I, I would still prefer the suited ones.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Suited ones, that doesn't mean you don't wanna play the offsuit.
I prefer aces every hand, but it can't happen.
Exactly, that's why we're, we're, we're dealing with the trash right now, you, you're in the dumpster Maxi, go ahead, let's start digging.
No, I'm not sure about the queen nine.
I'm not raising.
I like the jack nine and king nine.
Alright.
I'm not, I'm not raising.
Like, I'm gonna say it goes down to like maybe even five, four. Offsuit, like it's probably in there, down to five, four. Um, the gappers, six, four, seven, five, eight, six, seven, nine, I think it's gonna be most of your gappers. And I think it's somewhere where Louis said the floor is, so like around king nine, jack nine, probably looks good.
Uh, I think we're missing ace five, ace four.
All ace six.
I, I don't think ace five, ace four is in there.
I don't think, I don't think ace three, ace two are, I don't think.
It's like e- even against the one person we're folding.
I don't like ace five and ace four against the under the gun one.
I don't think ace six, ace seven, ace eight are in there, um, it's just ace four, ace five.
Yeah, you'll, you'll have mixing frequencies down to ace five for sure, like it's kinda, it's kinda.
I.
Nine as well.
I'm kinda like in between on ace eight, but I don't, I would fold ace seven, ace six off.
Uh, yeah, that looks right.
Yeah, so somewhere in that neighborhood.
Add ace nine off too, and then it's good.
Alright, so ace eight is kinda where it is, but like Maxi, look at the, the gappers and the things we're talking about.
Yeah.
Like five, five, three offsuit, six, four offsuit, for instance, like. You're gonna, you're gonna make like uh trip fours on these pots sometimes and you're just gonna cooler, cooler aces for two hundred big blinds. Like.
Yeah.
Joey said he didn't like the queen nine.
But that's okay, you know, it's a, they're, they're in there, they're mixing frequencies, like it's.
Ace four, ace five is not in there.
That's right.
Think those are bad.
There is, I was missing the gappers and connectors. Some of the weakest suited hands are folded.
But like, okay, so Maxi, let's, let's count some combos real quick, like how much, how many combos did you, you think you missed here with the gappers and the connectors? It's like, it's pretty significant, right? So there's sixteen, sixteen combos per node. So we got one, two, three, four, five, six full frequency nodes. And then there's like mixed frequencies of like one, two, three, four, five, six nodes. So like when you start doing the math, like. You're, you're missing probably over a hundred combos here.
Yeah, that's a lot. That's a lot.
Alright, let me do one before I go to the airport.
Alright. Let's see what Danny's got, um, big blind, I think, I don't know, man, you call, I would.
You just did it, no?
Yeah.
What did it say? Call, no?
Yeah, 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 it's in there.
Yeah.
Alright, so twenty-five big blinds under the gun versus button.
Nine, yeah, yeah, okay. Interesting.
Let's give Danny a hard one, pick the, pick the jams, jams only Danny, what do you jam?
Jams only. Um. Alright, queens through nines.
Okay, I, I don't, I don't know if you're jamming aces. Yeah, there, there, there.
Um, gonna go like king, jack suited, partial. Gonna go. Uh, all the ace kings, um, ace queen suited. Probably ace queen off in full as well. Uh, kings I think will mix, I think there's, we can still three bet to like. Seven big blinds here sometimes. With like kings and five slivers of five, slivers of. Ace ten off, whatever we saw before.
What else? This, this feels, this feels value heavy, you need something a little more polar.
Queen, jack suited probably is in there some too.
Yeah, I, I think that's good, I don't hate that. What about jack ten suited? How do you feel about that combo?
Um, probably just calling always. What about king ten suited? Maybe, maybe like the ace five suited gets in there a little bit. King ten suited, I'm, I might get in there some too. I don't know, I, in game I would just call king ten suited.
I think ace jack's probably a call.
Ace jack suited might mix, but I would primarily call. What, why is ace ten off, are you jamming ace ten off? No, that was like a sliver of a three bet small. And also.
Alright, so what about your suited wheel aces?
Usually just calling, I mean, yeah, probably, probably ace five suited and ace four suited can mix some jams in there.
Yeah, this seems, honestly, this seems okay, I think you nailed the value portion, um, queen, jack.
I checked the king jack.
Hold on, like Gavin.
I was just gonna say, I think like the, the low suited tens and these low suited jacks are gonna be where your bluffs come from, they get plenty of, plenty better to fold and. Um, when you called, like, they're usually pretty good, like, yeah, they're gonna show up with ace king here and like jack ten suited or queen, jack suited is doing very well. I, I do think the polar aces are gonna be in there too, that's all I was gonna say, pretty much.
Where do we, where do we stand with like ace nine?
I, I don't think you're bluffing those, I just don't think you're bluffing those.
I would call ace nine. Um, call the broadways, offsuit broadways. No, fold, fold ace seven, fold ace eight in the spot too, probably.
I personally think that.
What do you got, Jerry?
On the suited side, I think the, it's gonna be king ten, king nine instead of king, jack, king ten.
So you're facing, um, you're facing under the gun.
Offsuit nines here, except for ten nine. Yeah, I think if it was later position, you'd be right, Joey, but because it's EP, you pull from the suited jacks.
I think Nick is correct, I think it's, if it was, yeah, first early, you just need a little bit more, a little stronger.
I would fold king nine, fold queen nine, fold jack nine, call ten nine.
Hold what?
Fold ace seven, oh, are you, what is the green, are you marking the?
Yeah, those are missing.
Okay, this is, okay, okay, okay. I see what you're doing, and then yeah, like eights and below will call.
You wanna call some offsuit gappers or?
Uh, wanna, no, I don't even wanna call six, five off.
I mean, twenty-five is pretty shallow, to be honest.
You're definitely, definitely calling ten, nine off, nine, eight off, eight, seven off, those are pure calls for sure. Yeah, those, those are in there for me as well, um, I would stop it at seven, six probably is like, I don't even know if I. Call seven, six off here. Uh, and then on the suited side, everything except. Three deuce, seven deuce, eight deuce, four, uh. Yeah, actually, there's gonna be a little triangle where you don't call, right, from like. Ten deuce over to nine, four. I think you call everything suited. Yeah. Even three way?
Yeah, I think so as well. Especially against a but, when a button calls.
When you're this shallow, it's just everything.
Alright, so the jams, first off, like, look at the jams, so king, jack, queen, jack were good. Um, king ten is in there, it's good, and the suited wheels, those are like your, your bluffs. Kinda surprising, like the, the straw, the off suits are good. But like your strong suited stuff is uh preferring not all incisings.
Look at this Danny, you're missing this whole world here.
I sure am.
Thousands of blinders have, have been lost here.
Ten, seven, nine, six, eight, five, seven, four, six, three.
Look at the gappers.
Five, two for god's sake.
Wider than the last one.
I'm missing five, two, I have to tell you that.
Come on Kelly, you, you thought you, you're missing combos here.
Yeah, I'm missing five, two and four, two for sure.
Not wide enough.
What a net, old man net over here.
Geez Kelly, get your coffee out, man.
Oh, man. Whee.
And is what, is, is the thing that drove all those two gapper, those offsuit two gappers, the fact that we're short?
Yes, yes, Scotty, that's right.
Go against, even though we're against an even earlier position, oh.
You just got better pot odds to like hit a janky like king or something and like double up here, like.
I think Joey hit it, I, I think Joey hit it, I think when that big, I think when the button calls, I think that brings you in for a lot of those other hands, right?
Yeah, it, it definitely affects it for sure.
This is also.
Nine here.
It's also a smaller raise, it's two point one, the other ones we were looking at a bit deeper with two point three.
Yeah, okay.
You stand to win almost eight big blinds, which is a third, it's thirty-three percent of your entire chip stack. Like, you, you're just gonna defend more aggressively for that.
Hmm, the bottom of the deck is also gonna be a range construction thing.
Right.
Right, we're, we're just gonna have a lot of clean outs there.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Opposed to our opponents who are both gonna be linear top heavy.
Alright, well, I have to run. Thanks, enjoy, have a good one.
Enjoy, have a nice day, man.
Okay, so how do we construct a small blind multi way here, fifty big blinds, Steve?
Fifty multi way. So, if we think back to what my calling range was, I was a little wide, so it's gonna be around like. Suited eights and sevens maybe is the floor, maybe nines, it's, seventh is too wide maybe. Um, you're gonna VP most pairs. Um. Yeah, yeah, if, if not all pairs are in there for sure. Aces, we're gonna skip, we're gonna go polar with aces, right? So like the, the seven and the six probably are indifferent. But maybe the, the wheels are raising more, I don't know, something like that, along the pair axis, definitely good, down to. Six, five or seven, six somewhere in there. Um, we're going to lose a lot of value, uh, continuing with offsuit combos, so. Ace, jack, probably maybe fragments of ace ten. King, queen off, probably it continue, king, jack is too wide, I think.
I think it's. I don't know, yeah, EP is here, right?
Mm-hmm. And hijack, hijack is a stronger range than cutoff or button flattening, like this, this, this range has to be resilient versus squeezes. In position, so I think that's probably pretty close as far as like VP's go.
Ten, ten eights in there, no?
Ten eights probably close, I think ten eights probably close.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Jacks.
You see fragments of the sevens in there, with nine, seven, king, seven, we're indifferent along the ace, seven, ace, six, like we kind of identified. Follow the pair axis down, um, it's down to five, four, you got fragments of the gappers actually. And um, our resilience on the offsuit side as we identified is just. The, the range just kinda collapses, ace, jack is like a fold, king, queen off, like. You just, you're gonna have a very hard time converting those hands into. Profitable uh pots, post flop out of position to two people.
Alright.
Mm-hmm.
So king sevens, king seven suited, king six suited, you can put those together maybe and make a hand?
Yeah, honestly, I think, uh, yeah, king seven suited is gonna probably do much better in the long run than like a hand like ace, jack off here, I think.
It's also nice when the board comes seven, seven, seven.
The equity, see if that's true.
Funny how it picks more ten eight suited than ninety suited.
Yeah, you could, yeah, you can compare that.
Everything is zero though.
Yeah, they're just zero, so it's like.
Zero or negative. Alright.
You know, small blind's always very linear, deep stacked, even multi way, it seems like.
Well, yeah, to the point to where it's like, if you're playing cash games, you're not even supposed to have a calling range out of position, so.
Yeah.
It kinda makes.
Not quite true.
Depends on the game.
When I say out of position from the small blind, small blind like a simplification is you typically don't call from the small blind.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen ranges, yeah, it's just free bet only, yeah, I don't play cash, but I have seen it.
Small blind versus EP has a fairly amount, a fairly good amount of flattening.
Okay, cool, yeah, honestly, I haven't looked at those ranges.
Against late position is definitely only free bet though.
I'm just regurgitating uh general talking points I've heard.
Oh, you're good. I was gonna say, this is uh me and Scotty's wheelhouse, so.
Good, yeah, for sure.
Speaking of which, Nick, are you around tomorrow for the morning thing? Cuz uh crazy sixes isn't gonna be there.
I will, I'm playing a tournament tomorrow morning.
Well, and then you're also playing the tournament, okay, see you next week.
Uh, there's like, um, if I bust early, I'll be home for this session.
Okay.
So this is kind of an interesting spot, um.
Don't think like that.
It's a cool, it's a cool, this, this is a cool. Think seven, five.
This is a fold.
I mean, six deuce was in there at twenty-five.
Lewis, you're too short. You're too short to go thirty.
What is that small blind calling range consists of? This is why it's interesting, I don't know what the small blind is really calling, other than maybe.
Really strong, really strong.
Not suited.
Lot of pairs.
Maybe pairs, maybe, I, I just think at twenty, like most of your pairs probably still just wanna jam, no?
He's gonna have, he's gonna have suited connectors that contain a nine or a ten, blocking the bottom of the under the gun range.
I jam fives plus eight, so.
It'd be okay.
Well, that's his calling range from the small blind, uh wider than I thought.
Cause it's wider, it's cause you can realize your equity, cuz you're shallow, yeah. It is what I've been noticing a lot, I was talking to someone, you know, when you're shallow, you can actually call a lot more than a lot of people do.
Yeah, the other thing is the big blind's not gonna be shoving over the top of you very often either. Against the under the gun, you get protection from under the gun.
I think that's a good point, yeah.
Well, the, the big blind is really gonna be incentivized to call with all this suited stuff in this situation. Which means your combinations of better uh suited cards. With the aces and the kings and the ones with the higher equity with the connection around the straight access. Are gonna do well against the big blinds range, which is gonna have a wider swath of offsuit hands. You're gonna cooler big blind with his suited hands more off.
So that's why I'm getting cooler than the big blind all the time then.
Yeah, it's.
Just joking.
Small blind being able to call it this way.
Alright, so who wants to try this one?
Louis said he's got it.
Louis.
Well, well, this spot, the one we just looked at.
No, that was the small blind range, that was the small blind range, so like knowing that's the small blinds range. How are we continuing in the big blind here?
Well, I just saw the solution, and, and we basically just.
Yeah, okay, you didn't, you didn't.
Okay.
Start with the offsuit the hands.
Yeah, so we're cooling down to ace four, oh.
It's four, oh.
Yeah, and then like. Uh, like. King, 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 seven, oh.
Ooh.
Um.
Maybe.
Queen, eight, jack, eight. Ten, seven, oh, it was, it had like. Seven, four, oh was in there, so I assume eight, five, eight, six, all that kinda stuff, six, four, five, three, oh. And then obviously all the, all the suited hands.
Okay.
Um, and then we're gonna have some sharps, which will be like ace, king, ace, queen, um, nines plus.
What do you do with king, six, king, five, king, four?
Um. Fold them. Uh, actually.
Seven, queen, six, queen, five.
Actually, add, add queen, seven, add king, six.
Too late, Lee was. How about jack, seven, Lewis?
Jack, yeah, yeah, oh, cool, why not?
Too late, Lee was.
Um. Yeah.
Let's look at this. Queen, four, off, Lewis, missed that one.
Yeah, I missed that one.
Queen, seven, queen, eight.
Deuce, four deuce.
Lewis. Where's your five deuce off?
It said five deuce off.
Five deuce off.
You said five, three, I think, but.
Okay.
He said no lower than. You said no lower than seven, four.
But, um, yeah, I mean, honestly, this is, this is not an easy range. I wouldn't beat yourself up too hard about it.
Or I'm not.
I'm not calling Ace three and Ace deuce there, or the Ace five and Ace four, they matter. I'm not calling those aces there.
I'm missing some of those aces too.
Yeah, me too. I I multi-way, I don't like that, but I guess it's because of the small stack.
Well, I always want to understand. It's like, how are we actually making our big blind back with these hats? Like, like, how often do we get seven, four to showdown and win?
You don't bring it to showdown and win, Lewis. You apply your edge. Sometimes you block. Sometimes you get like, uh, the board is coming like five, five something, and then you just check raise. Because you got, you know, so you apply your edge. That's how you get it done.
Hey, you're just playing the other end of the board a lot.
Why are you folding? It's cool.
Seven, four, oh.
You just, you just lost seven big blind.
That's how you do it.
All right, this is a four in there.
Yeah.
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 You can fold. You can fold. All right, um, continuing, but yeah, it's just calls. Mm hmm. I don't know if you fold. I don't know. It's closed. You're in the big blind.
Wow.
Up, have it on.
See you later, guys. I gotta go dream about five deuce off.
Have a good one, Kelly. Thanks a lot for watching.